I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
What were you saying about the water?
So much better.
What shall we do with the consent?
I think we'll approve it.
Okay, let's approve that, all on paper. The next board of selectmen meeting will be Monday, August 26th, at 5:30 here in the town office. And under announcements, I've had some inquiries from people about concerning the relationship with the school board, with the select board, so I want to update people. Christine and I met this afternoon with Emily Thompson and Keith Hines of the school board, and with Stephen Bailey of the Maine School Management Association, which is an equivalent to the Maine Municipal Association for Educators. Mr. Bailey's been working with us to help us clarify roles and responsibilities between the town office and the school office. And as of today, we have agreed that Emily and Christine, with Julie and Lisa, will work out and reapply set of policies and procedures to facilitate better communication and increased efficiency for the workflow between the offices. That policy will be in place for payroll and accepting new hires at the school by September 1st. The first run will be for trial and finding the kinks and working those out, and Emily and Christine will take care of straightening out any inefficiencies that are discovered. September 1st is that date, and we'll have new accounts payable policies and procedures by November 1st, with, again, Emily and Christine working out the bugs in whatever system is set up. We're really hopeful that this will help facilitate the work that both boards do in an effective manner, and increase communication along the way. We're also planning to set up for probably January, a joint workshop, so that the boards will know each other, and anticipating that as we move into budget season, increased communication can only help us all. So that is my comment. Anybody else have anything?
Thank you guys for taking the time to take the initiative to start this process that's been long overdue.
Yeah, I think we're all glad that it's moving forward. And Mr. Bailey's been enormously helpful. Not only is he the executive of the Maine School Management Association, he's a West Bath resident, so he has extra cred.
Good.
Yes, and he's been very helpful to both of us, both sides of the road.
Good.
Very good. Is that somebody using the garbage to... I don't think it was. All right, garbage to garbage. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a follow-up on two items from the last week, just to cover the record. First item is, we had several, I'm not sure they were residents or not, but they were obviously owners and taxpayers, had general complaints about yards around town, like junkyards. And lengthy discussions from several parties, and the board advised them that if anybody wanted the board to take any action, that they had to submit a formal complaint about specific property and specific issue. And I was wondering, Christine, if you've received, or if anybody, code enforcement officer, had received any formal complaints in follow-up to those discussions of two weeks ago.
No, we haven't received anything yet.
Okay. I'm not surprised. And the other item is the revision. We voted on the LED project last time, and we voted to approve, to move to accept a change order under the provision that the school board approves government increase, with a provision, yeah, there's an increase of $6,000, I believe, with the increase in the LED. Did the school accept that?
Not at this point, anyway. I spoke with Emily about it, and she said she could cover a portion of it, but not a full amount.
Yeah.
And with their upcoming board meeting, I think that that will probably be an item of discussion.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you.
Another note, we should take note of the hearing on a lease for agriculture on August 20th, 2019, at 6 o'clock at the West Bath School Gym.
And this one is for Mr. Maras?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the good news, we don't often get prizes, but we got a $2,100 dividend check from the Maine Municipal Association as a result of our good loss experience and loss prevention programs. Well done. Good job.
It's nice to get a little bonus check.
Yeah, yeah. We usually send that money. It's nice to get a little.
A little loss is a good thing.
Yes. Anything else? Public comment. Anything from the public this evening? Public, my name's Simon, of the Time Beam. Business item number one, heating oil proposal. I have to find my spot. Do we have that? Yes.
Do we know how many gallons we went through last year?
I didn't get the total, no. This is the same amount that we had.
Last year.
On last year's day. Last year it was 242, or 243 per gallon. This year, the offer is 225. And if you approve, then they will set the order tomorrow morning, locking the price.
I think this arrangement is treated as well throughout the recent years. I think we should...
What was the price last year?
242.
It was 243.
So it's slightly decreased, do we know?
Huge market prices. I think we might have hit it at a good time.
It's overpriced. Let's take it. That's a motion.
I second it.
Yeah, all in favor?
We can all let them know in the morning.
Great, thanks.
I asked about 7,500 gallons, I just wondered if that was sort of the sweet spot. Do we need to order more, or reserve?
I could have asked Julie, I didn't think about it, but she hasn't mentioned anything, so...
I know if we use less, if we use only 7,000, we only pay for 7,000, I know that.
Right, that's right.
Okay.
And everybody was warm enough last winter. Is there other others?
So people have actually been using that recycling thing?
Yes.
You just saw them, it's cool.
Yeah, they pick up every Monday morning. What's that? Well, that's part of the committee procedures, the workshop.
Okay, we're not calling for an executive session, so we need to officially adjourn to a workshop?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that, then. All on paper?
Do you want to leave everything running?
Okay, so, it occurs to me, we did ask Christine to bring us into the 21st century with our committee structures, et cetera, et cetera. So this is kind of a, this is only a rap, so we've got a little bit of time to look at it. I'm just wondering if you have any particular comments?
And this first sheet of paper that you have, the town committee structure and procedures, was business item five from the previous agenda. I just made the copy again, so that because it was tabled at that meeting, I wanted you to have that same information that was provided.
This former business item five was about, a question about serving, asking the same people to be on this only board of appeals and assessment review. The other one was a suggestion, possibly, to combine the membership of the budget advisory committee and the investment committee into a 11-member finance committee, and that would have monthly meetings. There's a suggestion to disband the cemetery committee and the energy committee, as the energy committee have already completed their research, and they've made their recommendation. And the recycling committee, the possibility of disbanding that. The rationale for that is the committee members are actively, active individually in hazardous waste collection and composting, and don't need to be appointed to a committee to continue to serve in that capacity.
Yeah, the committee members, there's usually only one or two committee members that are available to attend a meeting. Those meetings are always first thing in the morning on a Monday, so they're not attended. I'm not sure if...
What's her, what's the lady's name, the chairman?
I think Liv must be the chairman.
Liv, yes. What does she think?
Well, we haven't talked to any of the committees yet. I think since the selectmen are the ones who appoint the committee, that the conversation needs to begin here. Let's see what you think, sort of gauge how you feel about it. Purpose is to create efficiencies and not have committees that are formed that don't serve a specific purpose or have meetings that can be attended.
What was the purpose of the cemetery committee? One point, what, three years ago?
Four.
A while ago, the mowing wasn't being done appropriately, and there had been some issues that were brought to our attention.
Mowing where all of them were located.
And some of the memory of where things were had been lost, so the cemetery committee relocated everything. They're now documented, I think you've seen the documentation. And our new mowing contracts, at least from the easily identified cemeteries to the ones you can actually drive by, they seem to be being well taken care of.
We actually have an Eagle Scout that's working on his project, well, to become an Eagle Scout, and he's putting together some sort of directory for the, at least the Witch Springs Cemetery, and I'm not sure, one of the other larger cemeteries, so that should, but then, that's great standing.
Yeah. Wonderful.
And fighting membership for that committee has been challenging as well.
Yeah, some of the leadership for that really came from people who don't currently live in town, but whose roots are deep. So it was helpful at the time, but perhaps not anymore.
The fact that, you know, if you choose not to continue with any specific committee, it doesn't mean that people can't serve, that we wouldn't ask them for their input or help with the project or something. I just have to question the validity of having all of these committees when some of them are not serving the purpose right now.
Mr. Hines?
What was the purpose in disbanding the energy committee?
My understanding was that the committee was done with the task that it was...
My understanding was that it wasn't just the LED or lighting program, it was to look at other bill efficiencies or one of the routes. It wasn't just one. As far as I knew, the other two members were interested in staying as a committee and looking in other ways at Tommy's, say, energy. And we had talked on a meeting this fall and see where it was going to go from there.
Well, that's why we have to have something in writing saying what these committees are formed for.
Well, I believe they had a charge.
I haven't seen anything.
I think it was probably in the minutes.
Yeah, we need more than that. We actually need a document for each committee stating what the charge is. So that I know that everybody... Yeah, no, I'm not asking for that.
I can do it if you want me to.
But that's why we're going over all of the committees right now, is because I think it's in the best interest of the community that the selectmen take a look at it and form a document for each of the committees, so that everybody knows what they're...
But I do know the other members of the committee are interested in looking at other issues and see if there's any common sense solutions.
Okay, well...
Is a committee and a board, are they synonymous?
Yes.
And the other question was combining the budget committee and the investment committee?
Yeah, I think that's a lot of people.
It is a lot of people, but what I'm really looking for is a committee that I can go through the entire year with, where we meet regularly, I can bounce ideas off of people, and get a wide range of knowledge and experience. I think it could be very effective for where what's Bath is right now. I think it could be very functional. And then the budget committee would be aware of every, everything surrounding the investments. It would broaden the budget committee's knowledge, and then if the investment committee members are interested in serving in that capacity, it would broaden their knowledge of general budgetary items. I think it could be very effective.
I think that's potentially true, I just think 11 is a huge number.
11 is probably the most that you would want. I don't know if there would be attrition or not.
Would you, making sure would be maybe having a subcommittee on the investment side of it, because I think that's more of a trained, professional look at those numbers, and the three gentlemen that do that now are well versed in investing, so I don't think the whole finance committee as a whole would need to be involved in researching interest rates in investing.
That's fine, I think when they're choosing a CD, which is basically what they do now, I think that could be a subcommittee. But I think the broader conversation, I think it would get more knowledge out into the community if more people are involved in the process.
I assume you have no problem trying that, just I think the investment should be left to those three gentlemen, they've done a good job.
Oh, they definitely have.
And they may not want to put the additional time into...
They may not, but I think it's worth at least talking about.
So, to follow up on that, if you decide to do that, would you just convene a general workshop meeting with the two committees to present this proposal?
Oh, to present the proposal?
To let the committees know what's involved.
That would make sense. I mean, for any changes are made, we would definitely want feedback from all of the committee members.
If you're going to do fruit basket upset, you should warn the fruit that you just, we don't want to just go whoosh.
No, and it would be markedly different, so I understand that, it would be a big change, so it is important to get the feedback.
And to see if the members of each committee are interested in that much time.
And serving in a different capacity. But I think if we're actually meeting all year long, I think it would reduce the number of meetings that are necessary when we're in the budget process, because I can talk about different pieces of the budget at different times of the year. I think it would be really helpful, instead of packing it all into one season.
Well, that's right, we'll pose a looking at it, all depends on what the different members feel.
If there's one committee that needs to work well for us, it's the budget committee, and it has.
So with this suggestion to combine the two committees, is there a deficiency now that combining the two committees would resolve?
I don't know that I would cite any deficiency.
Well, I'm looking for benefit, what's the benefit?
Yeah, I think a broader range of perspective, and maybe some different questions. I think the budget committee members have something to offer in a conversation about investing, and vice versa. I think they're two very different and distinct boards right now, and I think when they're brought together, I think it would, it would have a different dynamic that would be helpful.
Because the advantage that I see is that we have a group of people more consistently looking at the overall financial picture of income and outgo and all of that kind of stuff on an ongoing basis, just dedicated to what needs to be doing, what needs to be being done, and what are we anticipating, how does that fit in with the investments, how does that fit in with ongoing day-to-day stuff? That would be the advantage that I would see to doing it combined.
So budget and investment, then would that include taxes, tax collection, and tax assessments?
No.
Not necessarily, I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't bar the committee from having a conversation during commitment. That could be helpful, but that wouldn't be a primary focus.
If the members decide they want to do this, and the board does, how would we combine either officially or unofficially, sign from the school board into this program? So as an overall picture, it's more, more of an overall pitch for what's at school and the town?
Yeah, that's a good point. It's one that I didn't really think about.
See if one of the members would want to serve on this committee.
Well, because they have a subcommittee of the budget.
Yeah, they do. And they have a finance committee that works. So some coordination. I like that coordination across the highway with you.
Even if you just, they just came a couple times a year.
Absolutely, yeah.
So everybody knows what's going on from town.
And it's just another way of bringing everybody together. Yeah.
I think if we could figure out a way to simplify the budget process, that could only be helpful, but I want to make sure that we maintain that the contact that we have with the various committees. I like the process of having people come in and say what they're planning to do and how much money they anticipate having to have in order to do that, and then the refinement of that that takes place in the committee, I think is really important. But an overarching, if we can figure out a way to have an overarching picture, so everybody knows just what the assets of the town are.
Yeah, so we're not trying to figure that out at the last minute when we're knee-deep in budget season. Everybody would already be on the same page, they would know.
Can we go on the committee here?
Well, I'm just going to say, I need some time to think about this, to digest it.
I agree.
The one advantage that I can see right off the top of your proposal is meeting every month, particularly the budget committee. I think we take for granted how much time and attention Dave as chairman spends, because Dave knows the budget as well as we do, and the rest of the, the rest of the committee relies on David. And if we had the rest of the committee, if we almost up to speed that Dave's at, I think the town would be a far more beneficial situation. As far as combining with the investment committee, I got to think about that. I'm seeing right now, the investment committee and the budget committee is apples and oranges. It should remain that way, but I don't think about it.
I think that dynamic would be interesting myself. I can understand the reticence, too.
Yeah, I just think it's, those guys is...
And they might not be interested in serving in a different capacity.
It's a different type of job, it's...
It's different, but I do think it's important that they know what the town's goals are, and pick the fire truck, they know kind of what's going on, but I think that their timing...
Well, yes and no, but it's...
Right now, it's pretty flexible.
It's not a duplicate budget committee, it's the investment committee.
Right.
And they're investing on, what is, three months or six months, and they can certainly find out what...
At their past couple of meetings, they have expressed some amount of disconnect with our process, though. And that's actually when we started thinking about, well, would it make sense to make some changes? Because they don't understand the timing of how we want to spend our resources. There is a little bit of a disconnect, though.
Well, if nothing else, it certainly wouldn't be a problem to have a meeting with them, for those that could make it just to...
Maybe they join the committee quarterly or something.
Yeah.
Some iteration of this proposal.
But to bring all parties together in some form is a good idea in itself, rather than having separate, you know, separate committees and separate functions and very little communication, so...
I think the most important piece of the proposal is that we have consistent meetings throughout the year. I think that will go a long way to improving process and communications. That's the most important piece, to me.
So what would you anticipate, say, you call the budget committee meeting September? What would you...
I think we just, even if we chose a few items from the budget and talked about how those lines are working, and if we're planning for them in the appropriate way, I think the fact that we're just sitting down and having a conversation is beneficial, even if we don't vote on anything or take any distinct steps.
Do you think quarterly, Christine would do the same thing, as far as keeping the budget committee up to date where the town is?
I don't know that it would. You know, I would like to get the expense detail from Trio, for example, and have it on a monthly schedule, and have the committee renew it, to really...
See where you're on.
To see where we are, get the sense of whether or not we're on track, if we're too short in certain areas, or spending too much in others, and it just gives people an opportunity to say, hey, why are we paying for this? We found an item recently that we had been paying for for years that hadn't been used. I think it just brings more people into the process and gets the information out into the community in a more productive way. And it helps the committee members to really understand the accounts better, and frankly, it will help me, too. And frankly, it will help me, too.
I understand that some of the things that we do in West Bath are unique to West Bath.
I don't know that they're unique to West Bath, but they're unfamiliar from what I'm used to.
So I don't think we're in any way, shape, or form ready to make any radical changes this evening, but it's a good thing to think about.
I just want to say disband the cemetery committee. That's I have some angst with that because we do finally have them up to where they need to be, so we've dissolved that.
But nobody's participating like...
Well, I think we need to have a person. I'll be honest with you. I've gone to the cemetery and it sucks. I am sorry. We do not do a good job with the cemetery.
But if we don't have committee members, so we're stepping forward.
So I don't think we just disband. I think we try to get renewed interest and get people involved in the things that we really need to. If there's a concern in some things that need to be done, not just banned because nobody's attended. Maybe there's a lost interest, and I think we have to keep putting it out there. I think there are some people that are interested, but we just say it's all okay, and I don't think it's all okay.
I think that one of the things that committee was going to look at three years ago, three years ago, was to to shave some of the headstones and check with the Legion and other people to see if we're finding to do some of that. I don't think that's happened. But if we were to disband it, I would agree with Kathy that it should be at least looked at to see if we can find some committee members who would actually have time...
People are genuinely interested. They need to come in and express interest in the park.
Right.
That needs to happen. Because right now, we have one person.
Well, that's fine, but I think we also, as a town, need to express interest to the town and put it out there. Do we have any interest? We have had a dwindle and not just disband it because we don't see any interest. Because I'll be frank with you, I have a lot of interest. And I don't want to see it disbanded.
Would it make more sense for the selectmen to be the ones to lead the charge instead of having a committee?
I don't know.
This is kind of what I was suggesting.
Right, but I'm just saying, those are the conversations. I think we need to put it on our website. I think we need to get it out there as we're thinking about these big changes. Because West Bath is unique. There's some things people here don't want to give up.
Right, but what I'm, from an administrative standpoint, I am stating no interest in certain committees. And that's what I'm looking at. That's the perspective that I'm taking.
I think we have to make sure there's no interest before we disband it. Because if we start getting all these complaints about how bad the cemetery is, then we're going to have an expense plus an...
I think that's all the selectmen and the administrator, being sure we don't...
That's what we have, is if we get these complaints about the cemetery, there's a lot of interest about the cemetery that nobody wants to step up and do anything about it. That's what the problem is.
Right.
So...
Well, let's give it a go, Ben.
Like Dave said, the headstone issue. I don't know who was responsible for that, why it hasn't been addressed. I know why the issue was, our veterans used to get flags over here. That's not happening. I mean, what happened? Where is it?
The Legion's supposed to do that.
Where does it say that? They may have...
Well, the Legion says they do it.
Yeah, well...
There needs to be money in the budget for it, though. I noticed that we don't have money in the budget for flags. I wondered about that, too.
We have to pay those for those?
Well, we did in Bristol.
Really?
There you go.
Well, and if there is no committee support, it could be absorbing, like we have the health officer. Could we have a cemetery officer, someone that's appointed?
Right.
You know, I mean, the road commissioner, I'm sure he doesn't have the time to take on additional tasks, but...
And you do put information out about committee seats on the website.
And there's nothing more than people going and visiting the cemetery on Memorial Day weekend and seeing them on the mess. It's a bad image for this town. It's like we don't care, and it has been a mess.
I mean, the witch gurnon has been better. It's been cleaned up.
Which prairie?
Um, I don't know. Barry's Mill Road.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Well, I guess I'm looking at it two ways then. Try to get a committee, active committee. If not, maybe the idea of appointing someone to head this up. Maybe with a legion, you know, have somebody that's, maybe you can find a resident we want to take us on as their...
I was gonna say, there's got to be a resident, but the legion doesn't with this town.
I don't...
I mean, all it would take would be a quarterly visit to check in and see.
But you're right.
We don't need a committee for that necessarily.
It's hard to find committee, but if, I would at least try one more time committees. If not, try for one person.
Yeah, one person. Okay. I can call the legion and find out what the deal is with the flags.
Yeah.
I think the Alps has some kind of thing that they do, too, for their Alps numbers.
Well, I understand. The legion maintains a list of and, because I asked, I said, how do you know where, you know, all these graves are? And he just said, we know where all these graves are, so, okay.
Is this right?
And that's just what they do. Could possibly be that, well, we didn't know where all the cemeteries were.
I used to seek microbreation for flags.
Well, if we have to do that, we should do it. Agreed.
Yeah.
And several years ago, in the the big cemetery...
At the school?
Yeah, the one that is not part of the town.
Oh, the...
Orchard Hill.
Orchard Park, yeah. Somebody came in, ran and raved, and wanted a, the flag was all taverned with one. They wanted a new one for Fourth of July, put up. So I went ahead and we contacted the legion. Legion gave us a flag free of charge, and I went and hung it. And that was, everybody was happy, and legion didn't charge us for that flag. It was a big flag, too. And they said they were giving us an even bigger, more, a bigger flag would have fit the flagpole better, but they didn't have one.
I just think, and it's silly, I know, but the way the cemetery looks really bootspocks on the town.
Oh, it's definitely important. I'm just not sure that the committee is going to be our solution.
Well, you may be very right about that. Because this has not worked. It doesn't work, we find a cemetery.
Well, even if we had one bomb chair, we could appoint that bomb chair.
But a cemetery officer is a good idea.
Well, I'd throw it on Bean, but I think he's a little busy right now. I'd throw it on Steve, but you'd throw it on him. But I'd be happy to drive around with a quarter and check on houses.
I'd like to tour the cemetery. That's a private...
It's a private one. The town has nothing to do with that. That's private.
There are some lots to say, although if you're looking to get in there.
I have all my lots, thank you.
You really want to get in there. Already purchased.
That's a common statement by people in town. He's a town cemetery. It's not.
Orchard Hills is privately...
That's a discussion that started the whole committee.
Yes. I, who would we contact about the headstones?
That's on the town. I mean, you...
Yeah, I know. It's like us, but who, I don't know anything about...
We can contact a monument restoration company, and they can come out, take a look, and make a suggestion.
Does Dago have a, does he have a monument company? Plant. They work for Plant, I believe.
Does Paige still?
Or Paige.
I think Paige still does.
Well, it's not Paige. It's a different...
I guess they would come out and, you know, draw the proposal for...
Years ago, like the legion, they again used to help with some of those projects for veterans.
Yeah, maybe they still won't.
But you're right. We need someone to do it.
Yeah.
Head it up.
Well, and I don't want to be pointing the finger at myself, but we're not really responsible for the town cemeteries, so
I don't mind making some of those phone calls if you want.
Yeah, well, like fixing, fixing headstones, for example. Reality is, you fix one or two headstones, you have to kind of fix them all. Now, how responsible does the town want to be for this?
Yeah, that's another question that needs to be discussed. No, no, it's like maybe a couple of years. That is all that we're going to probably want to take care of.
Is that one behind the school house?
In Barry's Mill Road.
All of them except Orchard Hill or ours.
Many years ago, someone donated the granite chain pass, and one's broken on that.
One's been knocked down. Probably somebody hit it and ran.
Maybe instead of fixing all the headstones, maybe you fix one century. And then when you get that century repaired, then maybe you go for another 50 years or 100 years and maybe do it that way, because Peter has a good point.
That's a good idea. We could start with 14th century.
Right. And Mr. Montgomery's a veteran, so maybe he would be a good officer for the committee.
Maybe, but...
Especially if we do have a lot of, one, four, or two veterans out there. We do have a responsibility.
Well, they're Civil War veterans.
Years ago, we had a cemetery appointed at the town meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Person tried to set a trace appointed at town meeting. I was severe wood back and lumber.
Fence skewer.
Fence skewer. All those things gone. Now we need them back. Who knew?
And Christine, the discussion started about committees just in general, about disbanding committees would to stand a committee back up after we disbanded it or you disbanded it. Seems like that would be an administrative burden as well. So would it just be easier for administrative reasons to maybe just designate the committee as inactive or the membership vacant and then stand it up, stand it back up when you would need to stand it up?
Yeah, the selectmen would certainly choose to do that.
So call it inactive rather than disbanded.
I think that would give the board time to put together a document that says this is the committee's charge.
So these are the active committees and these are inactive committees.
And then when somebody says, hey, I want to serve on a committee, what does this committee do? We have something to show them so that it's clear what their charge is.
I think that's very important. Because we've had, we've had instances where committees have not understood the the scope and limitations of their responsibilities.
And we addressed this several, several years ago at this point. And generally, the policy that this board adopted about the committees was once, once the task at hand is completed, generally speaking, we'll disband it because of a, you have membership term lapses. And then if you want to fire up, start up a committee again, what was, you're dealing with mission statements and that kind of thing. And we decided it would just be easier to, to discontinue the committee once its function was completed. And then if the need came up in the future, we'll just start another committee.
Well, that sounds fine, too. It's fine with me.
With a specific pointed mission, rather than try to fall back on your own.
I was just thinking, it would save you from reinventing. We already had it sitting there in the sitting there in the, what, in the parking lot. You just pull it out of the parking lot.
Muffels. On the task note, I did mention to Christine that I feel like several committees, like the comprehensive plan committee, that really should have been a task force. You know, things that are for finite amounts of time to complete a specific goal. Although plan comes up every ten years, so maybe, maybe no task is ever complete.
Well...
But those kinds of details are outlined in the policy. Yeah.
But what's the changes that every county should have the same period?
Yeah, that's not...
Well, their terms run out, and then when it comes back up, oh, I think, but that's inactive committee.
Right.
Yeah, I kind of like the idea of being able to just say this committee is currently inactive and...
And then if there's a need and you know what their tasks do.
Like the reserve.
And you know what you deserve. Then it's all there. You're not reinventing the wheel from scratch. So if you have a cemetery committee, what do you expect for that committee? And if it's inactive and you get all these complaints of people stepping up, you can pull out and say, this is what it is. Do you still want to do it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because then reinventing the wheel every time.
Sort of as a placeholder, I guess.
As long as the charge continues to be the same.
Yeah. If you're reactivating, you'd need to take at least one look at what the current needs are.
Like with the energy committee, I had the idea that it was just for the LED project. I didn't know. So it would be nice to have something in writing that says this is long-term what the committee is responsible for.
There is something somewhere in writing, because it was...
It was just having that...
It's been in minutes in the last year or something.
Well, but the energy committee existed along before the energy project came up. It was John Davis.
There wasn't a committee, though.
Yeah.
They kind of...
Right, the members had last.
It would have been an inactive committee if we had that category until we reactivated it.
Yeah.
We should have vetted that category.
Makes sense.
Do you have time tomorrow?
I have all the time in the world.
So the hour is getting late, then.
So you want, you want to have us read this over and ruminate on it?
Yes, and mark it up.
And mark it up and...
Put questions back over it.
Because this is one document that we want to get set in stone for at least the next year.
Now, just a question. On this topic, I realize this is destined to be custom fabricated for the town of West Bath specifically. Where does the MMA, the mighty MMA, where do they sit on this, on this topic? Do they offer anything for guidance? They always have something to say about something.
I'm trying to think if anything's on their website about committees. I'm not...
Functionary boards and committees?
Yeah. I mean, they have their manuals, and some information is lifted from their manuals that are pointed towards certain topics. But as far as committee charges, I don't remember seeing anything.
Okay.
We could certainly inquire.
Yeah, maybe you have some suggestions, Rick.
Yeah, I'm thinking they probably put out like a vague outline guideline kind of thing, hopefully. For if anybody was interested in following that or using it as a prompt, hopefully that's what they've got. I would hate to step in a hole where they say, oh, you're doing this wrong, you know.
No, I don't think there would be anything like that because of Home Rule. But it's pretty much up to the board for like how, and the town, how we want to see it handled.
I did have a question about the, having the same people use the zoning Board of Appeals and the Board of Assessment Review. Can you talk about your rationale for that?
I think there are two committees that serve on an infrequent basis. They're both quasi judicial boards, so they have a similar, similar duties. And that's something that's pointed to in the policy as well. There is a statute that allows the same people to serve in both capacities. I think it would create an efficiency that could be helpful, especially in times where we don't find enough people to serve.
If Board of Assessment Review renders a decision and it's appealed, it's appealed to Superior Court, not to the Zoning Board of Appeals, right?
Correct.
Not, not to the Zoning Board of Appeals at all
Correct.
under any sort of chance.
Right.
So there shouldn't be any reason why people...
The Zoning Board of Appeals is for a moment.
Yeah. Well, and administrative as well.
Not, not by design.
We don't have a zoning board.
And that might be, that might be, that might be something we want to talk about as well. Because if we have an appeals board that hears appeals other than zoning, we need to, we need to be clear about that and what that means and what they're, what kind of issues that they're expected, expected to hear.
So what would be an example?
With assessing, they would not appeal to... With assessing, they would not appeal to a board of appeals. That wouldn't happen.
That definitely goes
Under any service.
That definitely goes to the main court.
Yes, absolutely, but because West Bath has a board of assessment review, it doesn't even go to the county commissioners.
That's why we have the board of assessment.
Right by the county commissioners and it goes to court.
Yeah, no, that's why we, we fought to establish that board, because the county just wasn't doing us any favors.
So Peter, in your experience, other than zoning, what if they, what if the board of appeals?
Somebody gets a complaint or fired, they have a right to appeal, that would go before
Oh, according to our employee handbook, those appeals are brought to the selectmen.
Yeah, that wouldn't go to a board of appeals.
It would be planning board decisions, not necessarily zoning, but
Well, it's about land use.
Any, I don't think
I mean, if they're acting as a fair hearing authority, do we have someone else appointed as fair hearing authority?
The selectmen should be appointed as fair hearing authority.
Right, so I, I, I just don't know what else the appeals board would hear.
Well, if the selectmen would hear things like firing or, or disciplinary or anything like that, then I don't know what the board of appeals would
Is a zoning board.
Just as big as for zoning.
I think we need to clarify that and make sure that we're all on the same page.
I don't know if we've ever had an administrative hearing or not. I know I've certainly threatened several times to file one. I don't think we ever actually have that I can remember.
So, is the name zoning board of appeals adequate?
Yes, that's the correct term, ZVA.
And, and has, and that would cover anything about land use that would come from the planning board?
Correct.
If I didn't, if I didn't like them telling me that I couldn't build my forty-story building on a two-acre lot, then
Sheesh, yeah.
My, my
And this is all outlined in statute and in MMA's manuals very clearly what the duties of the appeals board
Okay.
Are.
So that is something we may wanna present at some point to the board of appeals? Like the job description's responsible?
Yeah.
Are those committees, are those boards right now full or not?
No.
No.
I believe they each have the minimum number. Board of Appeals has two of their three members with no alternates. And Board of Assessment has four, I believe, with one regular and one alternate.
Yeah, that's rather weak.
Yeah, but appeals and two, that's
Yeah, I think appeals boards are actually supposed to have five members, but I'm not sure about that, I would have to check.
I think you're right.
I think if we combine them, I think it would make one strong.
But four or three.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah, I mean, whenever I put the committees out, I have not gotten any interest in those. Ashley is on board of appeals because she was sitting here and we forced her. And I think she did resign because she forgot about it.
Because it doesn't
And they meet infrequently.
I was on board of appeals for, I don't know, three, four years. We only met once.
Yeah, they only met once.
You know, and our only
It's a good showing, they do.
The only variance that, that we
What we planted.
That's a good thing.
Well, this is a lot to think about. So we're gonna, we're gonna see if we can re, re, restore the energy, the cemetery committee and I just think we need to put feelers out on all of this and what happens, happens. You know, this is their chance to respond.
On or not?
Yep.
Yeah. You know. See, if, see, if there's any interest out there, you can't lean horse to water.
You need to make the town residents, I guess, responsible to step up and decide what's important, what's not important and what would let go in the way, so.
And if we find that doesn't happen for whatever reason, then we'll find a way to get it done.
Yeah, and I
Without a committee.
Wouldn't have a problem, I don't know what it would entail, but overseeing the cemeteries and doing some of that work. Not sure what, what it would entail, but as long as I don't have to repair the stones and do the mowing.
And I think it would be fairly minimal, I think it would be as easy as checking in seasonally, you know.
Right.
At the spring to see if limbs have fallen and then in the fall, kind of maybe before
And I would be happy to contribute too, I just need somebody to give me a tour, so I know where I'm going. It might be fun to have a site visit.
A site, a selectman's site visit.
Maybe the historical society would like to organize a pantry.
We tried to, we tried to get them involved and they had no interest in partnering up with the cemetery committee.
Oh, that's, that's too bad.
They're not a town
They're not.
They're not, the historical society is its own organization.
Have they, have they done anything since Avery got down?
They still need
They do?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if we have, we put the word out on cemeteries. I need, we need captain. That's a wonderful
Captain ownership.
Yeah, one of the things that should be happening in addition to mowings, leaves need to be raved. Probably up at, on the berries, no
A bit of trimming.
Which spring, the blueberries ought to be harvested.
But the trees are growing.
Yeah. They're probably Growing in captain
Yeah, they're captain, sure.
So maybe we should, for next year's budget, take a look at what, what kind of expense it would be to have those trees taken down. I like the idea of doing a tour.
I think that would be really helpful to all involved. And I would be happy, if the committee idea doesn't work out, I would be happy to oversee cemeteries and take a look periodically and see if everything's
Because maybe we could set it up for either late afternoon or, or would you be available on a Saturday morning?
Sure.
So that people who have day, day jobs could actually, if they were interested.
I'd go on Saturday.
Maybe during hunting season, you know.
Shall, shall we wear bra?
Well, God, I'd put my white hat.
Put on white and wave.
So sad. I could not.
The woman up in Camden about forty years ago got killed, that's what she was doing. You came through on my
She was hanging a long ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is very sad.
Yes. Only use your colored sheets during hunting season. Okay, are we done for the evening?
Yeah, and we'll address this next time.
Yeah, let's take a look at it and maybe not accept it yet, but make our recommendations for edits and that kinda stuff. If we wanna do it next time, next time is gonna be a really full agenda.
The next time is a big agenda.
It is.
We've got the bids and our representatives.
That's gonna be heavy, I think there's gonna be a lot of people in the audience, so.
Yeah.
And I was gonna suggest, because we have all the bids on the website now, so when those go down, I'll bring up all the committees. So if we meet the, the second meeting in September,
Yeah.
that would give a chance to see if we've gotten any response.
Yeah, maybe committees can be our September focus.
Late September.
That would be nice.
Can we break a big meeting up like that over two weeks?
We could do it.
No, I mean, really, it's, I think it's less of a burden to meet for a couple of consecutive Mondays than it is to try to tackle one big, huge agenda.
Like a special meeting to talk about committees?
Because you wanna remember the first Monday in September's gonna be a holiday, so we'll admit it's that one, so it probably makes sense.
Okay, we're getting close.
September, are you kidding me?
Yeah. If you, if you trust us, Christine and I can divvy up the agenda and
Yeah, yeah.
Do it, do it two-weeker rather than a four-hour.
Yeah, I, we'll run out of gas after
Yeah, and it feels real heavy.
Yeah.
There's a big, long agenda.
It's like, oh, now what?
And I really, I am going to push the HR policy.
It makes sense.
I wanna, I wanna thank you for
Yeah, this is, this is
This is very thorough content, you put a lot of work in it, obviously. And so it's, we'll get to work on it, it's gonna be kind of valuable part of how we do. Thank you.
Mark, Carly had some recommendations to that aren't incorporated, so we can talk about that as well.
Regarding the cemetery committee and longstanding families of heirs or, or family tree that are out of the area, would there be benefit of inviting those folks to participate in the committee? Do they, in other words, do they have to be West Bath residents to participate on a committee like cemetery since their families may be represented in the cemetery?
We'll do, we'll do a task force, in which case it doesn't matter.
It would be nice if some families would like adopt a cemetery. You know, we said we got twelve of them, yeah, it would be nice.
That's an interesting body of
Well, the school does take trips out back to their cemeteries, so obviously they're slightly better attended than
Right, it'd just be nice if someone had an interest, like you say, heirs.
Well, some of them are surrounded by
The assessment committee was never our, I mean, it was our original intent that we were convinced we were gonna have to go outside of West Bath to get some expertise to serve on it, but as it happened that we got three residents, it was never the intent to restrict it to residents only.
Yeah, because it was
Still isn't, so we do that all the time. We call it a task force.
And see if anybody's interested.
Same thing.
I think it's a good idea, because there's, wow, and there's tons of people, you know.
I, I guess it would be worth pursuing, adopt a cemetery.
Yeah, it's an interesting approach, it'd be hard to try something like that.
I mean, I don't have anyone, but I would be willing
Just one that you check up on, I mean, you don't have to go weekly.
No, and then you can have somebody go check in in April and say, hey, Memorial Day weekend's coming, I noticed. Or in the fall, you know, these trees are
I would just send a email out to all of our families, say, asking for an update.
And another approach might be to possibly contact the abutters to the cemeteries that were looking to encourage adopt a cemetery. You as an abutterer, do you have any ideas? And you might say, oh, I'll, I'll adopt the cemetery, it's right, right next to me, because I'm not very big.
Oh, I'm short and some of them I don't look.
They might just think, well, that's somebody else's responsibility, it's a cemetery, it's not my cemetery, I'll leave the cemetery alone.
Or if somebody sees it's the weekend before Memorial Day, we can call and leave and say, hey, you got those five, tell them, I think it's kind of
And sometimes there's people who are willing to take a weed whacker and just, you know, do a little trimming.
Yeah, so it's nothing more than making them feel welcome at a cemetery that might be abiding their property.
Right. And I think that's part of the community that this town is missing. We don't have a community, I think this would be a way to stop that community. We need to find ways to make this a community and not just disjointed and odd town that we are.
Odd collection of odd people.
Yeah, and it becomes more challenging when there's no actual town center. There's not one town center.
I feel like the gas station is the town center.
Fodder for gossip.
They really don't, they're
For the most part.
People are just
In and out.
Yeah.
Ready, ready to go.
Or the one that stops and spews.
It's a polar, if you
So, what other, have we heard anything about DOT and the stoplight or?
Oh, that's not happening until next year.
Next fall, it was supposed to be this fall, I thought.
No, no, the bids, the bids were in like December or something?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
If work is started by April, I think
I don't think it's gonna happen.
In time to tie up traffic for the summer tourist.
No, they said they had it all done.
Next year.
Did that call up pretty fast, I don't know. They did do that much faster than I expected that they would do it. And thank goodness, because it was really hard to get it out of town for a while.
So we can call it the stoplight.
The stoplight.
Well, then we can become town.
That's gonna be the real meeting place, people are gonna be waving at their neighbors from the stoplight, rolling down their windows.
From one light town. Just like Mayberry.
We could, we could finally get a town slogan.
We could.
Meet you at the stoplight.
One light, just right.
One light, just right, I like, West Bath, that'd be tough to do a cemetery. Okay, we're silly, go home. We're already adjourned.
Thank you, thank you for joining us, I guess nobody wanted to join us.